Welcome, everyone, to the Glendale Housing Authority meeting of November 5th, Tuesday, Election Day, being called to order at 3:03 PM. May we please have roll call?
Yes, Housing Authority members Ajinian.
Here.
Asatrian.
Here.
Brotman.
Here.
Garpetian.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
Parazian.
Here.
Chair Kasakian.
Here, may we please have your report?
Yes, the agenda for the November 5th, 2024, regular meeting of the Glendale Housing Authority was posted on October 31st, 2024, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
All right, and next is approval of minutes. May we have a motion to approve?
I'll move approval of the minutes.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. May we have roll call, please?
Yes, Housing Authority members Ajinian.
Yes.
Asatrian.
Yes.
Brotman.
Yes.
Garpetian.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Parazian.
Yes.
Chair Kasakian.
Thank you, minutes are approved. Next is oral communication. Do we have any cards submitted or any callers? All right, then, seeing none, let's move on to the business agenda. Can you please read item 6A into the record?
Yes. 6A is community development regarding Housing Authority execution of an affordable housing agreement and ground lease associated with Piedmont Glendale LP, a California limited partnership created by EAH Housing for a proposed 100% affordable senior housing project, Park View Glendale, on Housing Authority-owned land at 426 Piedmont Avenue and 507 Narahaa Drive. One resolution approving an affordable housing agreement and ground lease with Piedmont Glendale LP for Housing Authority-owned land at 426 Piedmont Avenue and 507 Narahaa Drive in Glendale, California, 91206.
All right, Mr. Galanian and Mr. Zovak, I'll turn it over to you.
Yes, good afternoon, Chair Kasakian, members of the Housing Authority. We are excited to report on the progress of another, yet another affordable housing project that this council has approved. The staff has negotiated the terms of the affordable housing agreement and ground lease for this project, which is 100% affordable, 68-unit rental senior housing project, coined Park View Glendale. With that, I'll turn it over to Peter Zovak, our Assistant Director of Community Development Housing, for the report.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, members of the Housing Authority. Unfortunately, Mike Fortney couldn't be here today, so I'm presenting in his place. I do want to thank him and his staff for their hard work in bringing forward, as Mr. Galanian said, Glendale's newest affordable housing project, ready to go into construction. Our community development staff is seeking Housing Authority approval of the execution of an affordable housing agreement and ground lease associated with Piedmont Gardens LP, a California limited partnership created by EAH Housing for a proposed 100% affordable senior housing project on Housing Authority-owned land at 426 Piedmont Avenue and 507 Narahaa Drive. In August of 2022, the Housing Authority acquired the site for $11.9 million. The purpose of the Housing Authority acquisition was to develop a future 100% affordable senior rental housing development. The project site is improved with a main two-story building and one three-story annex building, which was used as a 112-bed assisted living facility. The buildings were vacant when the Housing Authority purchased the project site and the previous owners had begun rehabilitation of the building. They had only completed the exterior of the building. None of the interior was really completed before the Housing Authority acquired it. After Housing Authority acquisition in May 2023, the Housing Authority issued a request for qualifications for the development of the project. In response to the RFQ, EAH Housing submitted a proposal to ground lease the site from the Housing Authority and develop the site through the adaptive reuse of the existing buildings. In October of 2023, the Housing Authority approved entering into an exclusive negotiation agreement with EAH Housing. And with that ENA and project proposal in place, in May of 2024, EHA was able to I'm just doing an intro to the cover. Was able to secure 9% low-income tax credits from the California Tax Credit Allocation Committee, leading to this last step, which is before the start of construction, which is the approval of the affordable housing agreement and ground lease. So, the project is being called Park View Glendale, and the project summary is that it's a 68-unit affordable rental project for seniors. One of those units is a two-bedroom manager's unit, and that will not be affordable, so 67 units total. It's made up of 20 studios and 47 one-bedroom units, and it has 45 total parking spaces, which is included in a semi-subterranean garage that was existing. There is a rendering of the front facade of the Piedmont Glendale project, and as I stated, it's been a facade that's been worked on. The exterior has been worked on by the previous owners, and not much will change with the rehabilitation going on by EAH Housing. The income limits that will be served with this project range from 30% to 60% AMIs. And here in this chart, you see the extremely low-income levels, going up to 30% AMI, very low-income levels, which cover 31% to 50% AMI, and low-income levels, which go from 51% AMI to 60%. The unit mix and the rents are also listed in front of you in this next slide. You'll see that there are approximately my note here. 21 units that will be listed as 30% units, AMI units. There will also be 33 units that are designated as 50% AMI units, and 13 units designated as 60% AMI units. And what you see is the gross rents available minus utility allowance to the net rent that will then be charged to the tenants for the various studios and one-bedroom units designated between the 30% AMIs and 60% AMIs. And the rents will range anywhere from as low as $450 a month to as high as $1,490 per month. On this slide here, you'll see the sources and uses for both the construction phase and the permanent phase. The project is a 38-point, approximate $38.7 million project. The Housing Authority's contribution to this project is $11.9 million that was used to acquire the land, and additional $2.18 million that was provided to fill the financial feasibility gap that existed, for a total of just over $14 million in Housing Authority assistance. As I mentioned earlier, the developer was able to secure 9% tax credits for the project, which is always a big accomplishment. It's a very competitive process at the state level. They were able to achieve $24.3 million that will be coming in from the tax credit program and into our project. As I mentioned earlier, the units will be reserved for 30% to 60% AMI incomes for a period of 75 years with two 10-year options, so potentially the project can be affordable up to 95 years. Housing Authority's total assistance, approximately $14.1 million, approximately $207,000 per unit. And the Housing Authority's assistance will be in the form of a residual receipt loan secured by leasehold deeds of trust that will be subordinate to a permanent financing loan. And there are four pots of money that are being provided this project by the Housing Authority. They're all affordable housing funds that we have received and are putting out to the project. There are home ARP money that is being loaned out on this project. There's traditional low-mod income asset fund money from the old redevelopment money. There is some Measure S money that is going into this project, and from some PLHA money that is coming to us from the state. So, four pots of money on the city side for assistance. Next steps will, since the award of 9% tax credits, EHA has been in the plan check process and anticipates building permit issuance by early November. Construction will expect it to start no later than December 31st of next month. Construction is expected to last approximately 18 months with a deadline of June 30th, 2026. Six months, as traditional with our projects, approximately six months prior to the expected certificate of occupancy, marketing and lease-up of the units will begin, and we expect 100% lease-up within 90 days of the certificate of occupancy. And with that, that concludes the presentation. As I stated earlier, staff is looking for Housing Authority approval of the affordable housing agreement and ground lease associated with Piedmont Gardens.
All right, thank you. Is there any comments, yes, or questions? Authority member Asatrian.
Thank you to staff. This is really exciting. I have a couple of questions. If you go to the slide that has the rent levels. It says 2024 rent limits. How much are they allowed to, or how much are we going to be raising the rents on an annual basis?
These rents are tied to the State of California program with tax credits. And so, it's as the state raises them over time. And then there's a number of factors that come into play. It's mostly conditioned on what they do in raising the income limits, the area median income limits. So, it's a formula associated with income limits, and those are set by the state.
Okay, so, I recognize that the ball has moved forward on this project, but the last time that Piedmont was in front of this body, I had talked about the social security income levels, and I think I'm not alone in hearing from especially elderly residents who are unable to make ends meet, even when they are in affordable housing units, particularly when the rents are going up along with our utility bills and just inflation in general. When I look at the 2025 with the COLA adjustment for SSI, an individual's maximum is $967, and the individual with an eligible spouse is $1,450. When I look at these numbers, I'm also trying to figure out how someone is able to really live, and what measures we can do, take or put in place as a council or as an authority, maybe an overall policy of attempting to reduce the rates later. I'm not attempting to fault this at this point. I'm just looking for some sort of direction from staff. I think it's something I've raised for the last two years, but I think it's ever so concerning, given the state of inflation and the rising costs in every space.
I will respond that I do know that Mr. Fortney and his staff worked with the developers and got deeper income targeting than what is normally given when you have a tax credit project. So, he's able to negotiate a large number of 30% units, 21 units at 30% AMIs, and 33 units at 50% AMIs. I know the 60% AMIs, to some people, might feel that the rent structure is a little bit high, but in speaking with the developer this morning about whether or not there's any ability to buy down any additional affordability, particularly the 60% units, what was, the response that we received was that there is a debt test that exists at the state and federal level with regards to projects like these, and that if the rents were lowered any more than what they are now, that it wouldn't be able to meet a debt test that's required by the IRS in order for the tax credits to be operative. So, it's one of the elements that makes trying to get deeper income targeting difficult, but it's certainly something that we've heard and we understand, and that moving forward, we could take a look at earlier on in the process to be able to look at and see what we can do in situations like that.
What about the utility allowance?
The utility allowances are set by the Section 8 program. So, that's a utility allowance that's established for the Section 8 program, and it is adopted and considered applicable to our affordable housing projects.
Okay, so, Chair Kasakian, I would like to, at some point, agendize a conversation on how we maybe either create a fund or just talk about this as a policy during one of these meetings coming up, and we can get a report from council. Are we, that obviously has nothing to do with Piedmont, so do you want me to wait until later?
A report on what exactly specifically?
So, I'd like for us to talk about creating an affordable housing fund that, or putting in additional funding to help the residents that are seniors that are on SSI, and given the limits that are placed here, as stated by staff from the state and federal, what we can do locally as a policy to help reduce some of the costs for our residents. Again, I don't think I'm alone in hearing from seniors time and again about their inability to pay rent with SSI, even when they are in affordable housing and looking to leave a city that they've spent most of their life in, so.
So, the request is to agendize a discussion on setting aside?
Setting aside either additional affordable housing funds or looking at some policy options, I would leave that to staff, that we can come up with for future affordable housing and how we make it more affordable.
Thank you. Anyone wishing to second that request? Not, I'll go ahead.
Wouldn't that just come up under new business?
Would it? Would it be under?
Yeah, Housing Chair Kasakian, we can add it to next week's new business agenda, so for.
Okay, all right. So, it would be a council discussion, not a Housing Authority discussion?
Not a Housing.
All right, fine. I'd support the discussion on that as well. All right, any other questions or comments on this item?
Yes.
Go ahead.
If I might.
Authority member Brotman. I'm sorry, Authority member Garpetian, I cannot see who on the authority has their hands up.
Okay, go ahead, go ahead. It doesn't matter what order I go. I just wanted to follow up on something I raised in the briefing about what's the, is this going to be an all-electric building or a mixed fuel? There was kind of uncertainty, and I asked us to look at.
It will not be an all-electric building.
It will not?
It will not.
And why? What is not electric?
Construction costs to retrofit the building to be able to be 100% electric from the very beginning were estimated to be more than what the project would be able to support. And so, those costs were considered to be too high.
So, Zovak, do you know what is not going to be electric? What elements of the project?
The water heaters will be gas-operated and.
Please come to the podium.
Pia Navarro from EHA, EAH Housing.
Hello, thank you for having me. So, what will be gas-operated is the heaters for the building and also the DOAS units that, what they are, is that they extract the air and bring the new air in. Those are the two things that will be operated by gas.
The heaters, the water heaters or the space heaters?
No, 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 no space, water heaters.
The water heaters?
Mm-hmm, for the building.
Okay, and future retrofit costs, because we're going to have this for 75 years, certainly this retrofit will have to happen well before the end of 75 years. So, has that been considered?
It's really too early to be able to consider it right now, but there is always a point in time, typically after 20 years, before 30 years, where the project is looked at to go through a major re-renovation again and looking at systems. So, that would be the time to be able to look at that.
And was there analysis done on the relative cost, the lifecycle cost of the electric versus gas equipment?
Not going out 20 years from now, no.
No, for now, no?
If I may, so, this was looked into by the electrical engineer in this conversation with GWP about the possibility of going all-electric. GWP stated that absolutely not, because they do not have the infrastructure to be able to support a 100% electric building.
They don't have the infrastructure to support it? I don't understand that.
It's, they don't have, GWP does not have the capacity to be able to feed a 100% electric building. More details than that I don't have.
Okay, I mean, in general, I'm just not going to support anything, any new construction in Glendale that we're funding that puts fossil fuels into buildings. So, I'm a no on this.
Councilmember Garpetian.
Yes, thank you. I like this conversion project. I think it's much quicker than ground-up build, and I fully support it. I have a couple of questions about the square footage of the property. Do you know what the square footage of the property is?
Square footage of the property, I do not have. I have square footage of the building itself.
Unit, I mean, the building, yes.
Yeah, 65,000 square feet.
So, 65,000?
And that includes the garage below, the parking garage.
The living space, not, because parking garage is not part of the living space.
Well, I'll have to, I don't have that, that square footage.
I have 47,500.
47,500, 47 units, basically, it's give and take with all the common areas. Sorry?
67.
67, okay. So, what does it adds up to? My question is about the renovation cost, because I think we are in at $207,000 per door as a city, but the renovation cost is about $362,000 a door. So, I'm sure that the staff has looked at it, you know, cost of construction went up and everything else, but I think we need to be a little bit careful on the construction part of it as to why is it costing this much? Because at the end, again, it's costing us $569,000 a door for an existing building, which I'm all for providing more affordable housing, don't get me wrong, but I think we need to, you know, we don't have unlimited funds, and we have to count every dollar that we have. So, this $362,000 a door for, what is it, the the cost per? Do we have any numbers on that, Mr. Zovak? Have we done the evaluation on the, do we do that, or it's all up to the developer to provide the cost of construction for us?
That's reviewed at different levels. It's reviewed by staff level, it's reviewed at the TCAC level as well.
Okay, so, it's like $708 a foot for the renovation?
Does that make it?
Huh?
What was the total?
The total of the projects is $38,694,000, but the total cost per unit is 569,000, which is pretty high. I know there are many different, you know, obstacles that we have to jump over, but price per square foot, $700 for renovation, I think it's a little bit steep. I don't know what could be done at this point, but I think for the future projects, and this doesn't include the cost of the land, it's just the cost of the construction. So, it's very, very steep. I know that sometimes conversions are a lot more expensive than renovations, a lot more expensive than new projects, but we need to, we need to look at those a little bit more closely to find out how can we save some of our funds in general. But I'm in support of the project. I think we need, we need more affordable housing. This one provides 67 more, so.
I hear your concerns with regards to overall construction, and there's many arguments as to why renovation versus new construction could be higher and problematic. Overall, though, the city's assistance is at $208,000 per unit, which is a great investment.
It is, it is. That's what I said, our numbers are good.
I understand how certain situations and ACT rehab could be more cost-effective and faster than new construction.
Right.
There are very limited cases that a situation like that could work, but they could be out there.
Right, okay, thank you.
Yes, member Ajinian and then.
Yeah, just real quickly, since we're talking utilities, Peter, is the air conditioning part of the centralized system taken into account as a utility allowance?
Yes, AC systems, when looking at the utility allowance, are taken into consideration.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Member Najarian and then member Parazian.
So, I have a question, and Councilmember Brotman's comments have brought it to my mind. Is the Berkeley case still good law?
Yes.
Can I say that I'm not going to vote for this because it's not all-electric? Doesn't that violate?
Councilmember.
And in spirit the law? We haven't adopted our new energy, that new thing that we talked about a month ago.
Councilmember Najarian, it would be generally our view that although that law applies to a regulatory scheme that we might impose on private property owners, we have broader discretion in how we spend our funds, how we spend, and how we subsidize projects. And so, if there's a policy goal that we feel we're not meeting as a result of that, it's within the council's jurisdiction to say you choose not to fund it. Again, that's not staff's recommendation, but I think.
Which is different than what we're doing for the home or the new standard.
Correct, that's the regulation that we were posing on private property.
We have money going into it on our own, okay.
Thank you, member Parazian.
Okay, I just have a comment. I have very good memory of the building, so I believe there was senior assisted living at that time. That was in 1995, that was city election site. I was working there as an election worker, first time, that was my first job after getting my citizenship. Now, I'm happy that the same building will house 68 new seniors. Thank you so much, everybody.
All right, thank you very much. And the manager, yes. All right, so, I understand some of the concerns and questions that my colleagues raised about costs, about additional impact on using fossil fuels. However, I would urge all, and I think that we're generally in consensus that in terms of this project is concerned, to not allow perfection to be the enemy of good progress. So, we are making progress, especially in one area where we have a very great need in our community, and that is providing housing for some of the most vulnerable segments of our community, people who are limited in their incomes, who are seniors, who are not able to go out and find additional work to supplement income. That is, hasn't really increased as the cost of everything else has increased, and I am supportive of this project to be converted to affordable. to affordable housing for our residents as well. So with that, we have a council motion and a housing motion before us. Who would like to make the council motion for us to move forward?
So moved.
Second.
That was moved by Councilmember Garpetian and seconded by council, sorry, Authority Member Garpetian, seconded by Authority Member Asatriyan. May we have roll call, please?
Do we have any speakers on this?
We do not, but this is the Housing Authority.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm looking at the wrong, I'm looking at the joint agenda, yes. So we just have a resolution of approving the affordable housing agreements. So who would like to make that motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Authority Member Garpetian and seconded by Authority Member Asatriyan. May we have roll call, please?
Yes, Authority Member Ajinian.
Yes.
Asatriyan.
Yes.
Brotman.
Before I vote, I just want to say I'm not trying to stop the project. I just want it done right, and I don't think this is doing it right. So I'm a no.
Garpetian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Parazian?
Yes.
Cherkasakian.
Yes, thank you. All right, since there are no other comments, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
There's Authority Member staff comments. I don't know.
Do we have any Authority Member or staff comments?
I'll move to adjourn.
Second.
Thank you.
Right.
All right, we are adjourned.
Just rolling over or changing screens? All right, welcome to the joint meeting of the Glendale City Council. May we have roll call, oh, and Glendale Housing Authority, may we have roll call?
I will call roll for for council first. Councilmembers Brotman.
Here.
Parpetian. Kasakian.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
Mayor Asatriyan.
Here.
Thank you. May we have roll call for Housing Authority?
Yes. Housing Authority Members Ajinian.
Here.
Asatriyan.
Here.
Brotman.
Here.
Parpetian. Najarian.
Here.
Parazian.
Here.
Cherkasakian.
Here.
And may we have your report?
Yes, the agenda for the Tuesday, November 5, 2024, Joint Public Meeting of the City Council and Housing Authority was posted on October 31, 2024 on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
And then what's next?
Next is item one, Community Services and Parks Regarding Status of Program Planning for the Fiscal Year 2025-2026, Community Development Block Grant, CDBG Emergency Solutions Grant, ESG, and Home Investment Partnerships Act, Home Annual Action Plan. A City Council motion approving the 2025-2020/2030 Consolidated Plan Program Priorities, Fiscal Year 2025 through 2026 CDBG Program Priorities, and Fiscal Year 2025-2026 Proposed CDBG Funding Allocation Plan by Funding Category and Issuance of an RFP to Community Agencies for CDBG and and ESG Public Social Services and CDBG Capital Improvement Projects. B, Housing Authority Motion Approving the 2025 through 2030 Consolidated Plan Program Priorities, Fiscal Year 2025-2026 CDBG Program Priorities, and Fiscal Year 2025-2026 Proposed CDBG Funding Allocation Plan by Funding Category and Issuance of an RFP to Community Agencies for CDBG and ESG Public Social Services and CDBG Capital Improvement Projects.
Welcome.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon, Mayor Asatriyan, members of the City Council, members of the Housing Authority. I'm Maggie Kavarian, Community Services Manager, here to present to you the status of our program planning for our upcoming 25-26 year, as well as our five-year plan, which is forthcoming. The purpose of our program planning is really to determine our program priorities for the next five years. This is our, the big five-year period of 25-30 consolidated plan. This sets the tone for the next five years and the con plan, the first year of the con plan will be 25-26. And then we are also proposing the 25-26 CDBG Funding Allocation Plan by Funding Category. This is, these are estimates at this time. And then we are also asking to issue a CDBG RFP to Community Agencies for Social Services and Capital Improvement Projects, as well as an RFP to our ESG Program for Public Social Services. The Advisory Committee met on October 23 and made recommendations for the program priorities based on our community needs assessment that we had done. They also reviewed and recommended the proposed funding allocation plan that we will present to you today, and they also reviewed the RFP process and timeline for the upcoming year so community agencies can apply for funding. So the methodology used for the community needs assessment was very comprehensive this year due to the com, to the const, due to the consolidated plan. We did do a community needs assessment. This was available for one whole month, and we had 759 surveys that were received and tabulated. These surveys were available in English, Armenian, and Spanish. We also held a community meeting on October 2, where we had 120 people attending that meeting. We also did community outreach at various city and community events and programs, various businesses in Glendale. We worked with the school district, as well as the Glendale Community College, and then hospitals, our three local area hospitals. Every year we also do a data analysis through American Community Survey, so we kind of get a gauge of what's happening in our community for that year. We put a few bullet points for the council and Housing Authority. 3.4% of Glendale families live below poverty line. 18.4% of Glendale residents are over 65 and older. 66.7% of Glendale residents speak a language other than English at home. So these numbers fluctuate year by year, but we do want to share that with the committee, with the council and Housing Authority. So this is our community needs assessment, I'm sorry, community needs survey flyer. And then we have bullet pointed all the ways that we have shared that this year. We had a CDBG open house in September. We invited nonprofits to attend. We had about 19 nonprofits attend. We also shared it with our city and department websites, our City Connections newsletter, our Community Services and Parks newsletter, our distribution lists, our city counters, community events, Glendale businesses, GUSD, GCC, and and whatnot, and of course, our social media. Our community meeting was especially successful due to the con plan and how we tried to figure out a better way to get people in. And I'll be truthful, we usually get three to five persons attending our community meetings that we help host every year, and we've even tried virtual and in person, and we still seem to get very few people to attend. So this year, we really wanted to figure out a way to do it a little better. So we formulated like an idea to bring in the In-N-Out Food Truck. So we had In-N-Out Food Truck, we had free on child, onsite childcare. We also did raffle prizes during our breakout sessions. We had an English, Spanish, and Armenian breakout session, and we had 120 people attend, and we think that is due to the incentives that came with this community meeting. We also sent out 23,000 mailers around the census tract areas of low to moderate income individuals who live around the area. We offered the community needs survey onsite, so we assisted folks to take the survey onsite, get their burger, give us their comments, and all of those comments and information is part of your exhibits packet. This is just continued pictures of our breakout sessions, as well as our main session that was held in the Adult Recreation Center Dining Room. And then we also had outreach efforts. We had attended city staff, had attended the Armenian-American Music Festival, the Ballet for Clorico Mexico Azteca Event. We had attended the Community Fall Fair at the Glendale Presbyterian Church, estate planning workshops. We attended various Glendale Library and Arts and Culture Events and businesses up and down Brand Boulevard, and so we could share our survey. And with that, we have the program priorities for the next five years in no particular order for public facilities, public social services, neighborhood improvements, housing, special needs housing, and homeless services. These priorities will be as part of our RFP packet, so when community agencies do apply for funding, they know what the priorities are and they can put that in their submission. And as I had mentioned, we did do a funding allocation plan. Again, these numbers are estimates at this time. We don't receive final funding allocations from U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development until spring of 2025. And so at this time, the Community Development Block Grant is, we're anticipating about $1.7 million in funding, with the Emergency Solutions Grant, about $155,000, and with the Home Investment Partnership Program, about $1.5 million. And to break down the CDBG program funding allocation plan a bit further, of that $1.7 million, 20% is set aside for program administration, 15% is set aside for public social services, and 1.1 million goes to our capital improvement projects. And when we break that down even further, we have half a million dollars set aside for the city's pre-designated parks projects. And this year, it will be Elk Mini Park Playground Replacement Project and Wilson Mini Park Playground Replacement Project at $250,000 each, leaving $605,000 available for our community agencies through an RFP process. And then the timeline, the RFP proposal timeline, Ed mentioned that CDBG Open House was held in September. So we did our initial outreach to agencies interested in funding. We had some new attendees. And then in November, we plan on releasing the RFP. It will be online again, as it was last year, our first year of Zoom grants. And then we'll have a mandatory in-person technical assistance workshop in December, and then we'll accept the proposals on or by January 10 of 2025. This concludes my presentation. If you have any questions on our program planning, I'd be more than happy to answer.
Yes, do you have quite a list of the RFP proposals?
We are not releasing the RFP until November 18.
But 10 days from now.
Correct. But we are going to be doing a marketing campaign with our agencies.
Any other questions? Go ahead.
So, thank you for your report. You mentioned there is 2.4% of the residents that live poverty line. Below poverty line, I'm sorry. Do we know, how do we rank against Burbank and Pasadena?
That's a great question. I can look that up on American Community Survey. At this time, what we did was we always base it on LA County results. So if you look at exhibit, find the exhibit. Sorry. It's under our key demographic indicators. So under the key demographic indicators, it'll tell you what the LA County results are, so.
I mean, if it's too difficult to find, it's okay, maybe we can, we can.
Absolutely.
We can, we can bring those numbers up in the upcoming meetings.
But that's a good question. It's right here. It's, LA County is 13.9% who identify as living below the poverty line. But this is a great question because this question was also brought up by our CDBG Advisory Committee in October. They are asking to do like a benchmark study with Burbank and Pasadena and the surrounding areas. So we will be providing that in future exhibits.
And what is that income threshold? What is it? 13,000 a year, 20,000 a year?
We get the results from our American Community Survey, so I don't know how they base those numbers, to be truthful.
Maybe that's something that we can have in the, in our future meetings, because out of this entire report, this number is very concerning to me. There are almost 9,900 families that live below poverty line, and that adds up to almost 27,000 people. So until you get these reports, many people don't know about these numbers. So I think that's something that we need to pay a little bit more attention and see how can we address this issue, because this is a big number. So with that, I'm, I'm okay with the report, but that's, that's all I have at this time. Thank you.
Councilmember Kasakian?
Thank you. I don't have any questions. Just wanted to thank you for your hard work. I think the outreach, the shift that you made in how you do the outreach, the community meeting, and how you were able to attract more people is a great success, and congratulating you and your staff. And I want to also, Ms. Kavarian, say that I think this list of priorities reflects a lot of work that both you and your department have cut out for you, as well as us as the council, looking at these needs. There isn't some magic pill coming from somewhere to be able to solve these. So we appreciate you working with nonprofits and the community-based organizations and with the departments to make these improvements, to make the community better and safer and servicing everyone. So I'd be happy to support or make the motion when the time comes. Thank you, Mayor.
Council?
Thank you for the report. And my question is a little bit tangential to this discussion, but there's a map, Exhibit 2. And I'm a little surprised at that swath that runs from precinct or Census Tract 3008, 3006, and and up there. I mean, there's some pretty expensive homes there. There's not a lot of multifamily. I mean, it's not even moderate income. This is presented as low income. Is that, I mean, do you agree with that? Is that something?
That's a great question, Councilmember Najarian. This actually changed the original map that we had. We had it updated with the updated numbers, and we also questioned that little swath of area. And we realized that this is the area around the Adult Recreation Center where we have a many senior housing units. And it also goes towards Colorado, towards John's Market in that particular area of Colorado. So we realized it could be that area that's picking up the low to, I don't want to say moderate income, but the extremely low income folks that live in that census tract.
I mean, it looks like it's the neighborhoods of Spar Heights, Montecito Park, Verdugo Woodlands West. I'm sorry, Verdugo Woodlands East. It's just, well, I mean, it really doesn't have a bearing on what we're here for today, but that's just struck me as being a little bit perhaps off. In any event, that's just an observation.
Any other questions or comments?
Thank you to staff. I echo and councilmembers' sentiments about your community outreach. I was very impressed with it. I know that this is up to 2030, and I know that I've brought this up in different ways, but the new census that's coming out in 2030, the American Community Survey is going to be based off of race, which if we don't get an Armenian checkbox for our community, is going to completely wipe us from the, being able to get the, any information from the American Community Survey, which was the only place we could get it to this point. That was still an estimate because there was no Armenian checkbox on the census, but it's going to make us completely invisible. And so I think as we kind of go through that process and see what happens, and if it comes to a point where the community is still not. to a point where the community is still not represented in the census, the city itself needs to figure out what we need to do to ensure that the data analysis that we get, and we do beyond that, also takes into account how we collect data on our own on the, you know, roughly 40% of our city's population, so.
And Mayor Asatriyan, that's a great point you make. Part of the community survey that we did, when we worked with our consultant, Veronica Tam and Associates, we had actually requested that we have a box, a checkbox for ethnicity, for Armenian, for Filipino, and I believe a couple of other race, ethnicities. So we would have those representative, represented in our community needs survey.
Right. But the, but the American Community Survey, if we don't do something about, after 2030, we'll not have that opportunity for us to request that information anymore for the Armenian community. Okay. All right. Do I have a?
Motion?
Are there any cards? I'd like to make the motion for the City Council.
I'll second that.
Roll call.
Councilmembers Brotman.
Yes.
Garpetian.
Yes.
Kasakian.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Mayor Asatriyan.
Yes.
And we have a motion for Housing Authority.
I'll move.
All right. Made by Member Asatriyan, seconded by Member Prasian. May we have roll call, please?
Yes. Housing Authority Members Ajinian.
Yes.
Asatriyan.
Yes.
Brotman.
Yes.
Garpetian.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Parazian.
Yes.
Chair Kasakian.
Yes.
And what's next?
Move to adjourn for council?
Second. Motion for, to adjourn for housing?
Move to adjourn for housing.
Second.
All right. We're adjourned. Thank you. We're already on? All right. Welcome to the November 5 meeting of the Glendale City Council. May we have roll call?
Yes. Councilmembers Brotman.
Here.
Garpetian.
Here.
Kasakian. Najarian.
Here.
Mayor Asatriyan.
Here.
Do we anticipate reporting out?
Oh, yes.
Oh. May we have your report, please?
Yeah. Here are the closed session items. Closed session item A, conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, initiation of litigation pursuant to paragraph four of subdivision D of Government Code, Section 54956.91, potential case. B, public employment attorneys. C, conference with real property negotiator, city designated negotiator, Bradley Calvert, negotiating party, Eric Hojoian. Property 1401 North Verdugo Road. Instructions to the negotiators will concern the price and terms of payment for the lease of city-owned property. D, conference with legal counsel, existing litigation, Babayan versus City of Glendale, LASC case number 22GDCV00956. E, conference with legal counsel, existing litigation, Najarian versus City of Glendale, LASC case number 24STCP02101, claim of Najarian number 25-0009. F, public employee appointment, Director of Public Works.
Madam, may we anticipate reporting on item one F?
Right. We'll recess to a closed session.